Good evening, everyone. My name is David McFadden. It is 7:00 PM. Wednesday, April 20th. This is the beginning of a regular meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please? Present.
Deputy Mayor Shaw.
Present.
Trustee Brooke.
Present.
Trustee Casker.
Present.
Trustee Shara.
Present.
All right, so we're going to rise for the pledge, and we're also going to remain standing for a moment of silence for the people of Ukraine in an unprecedented need. So let's rise to the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. So first, I want to wish everyone a happy Easter and Passover, and also I thought we'd take a moment of silence for the people of Ukraine in this desperate, unprecedented time of need. Thank you. Let's be seated. As most of you know, we just finished up for the year, the financial budgeting and property tax matters that we deal with every spring. Our fiscal year starts June 1st. We finished ahead of schedule, and with a total of three meetings that did not last forever, it was really good, and it's all because of the work that deputy deputy mayor trustee Tinka Shaw did as our, as my budget director, along with John Ledwith and Elizabeth. I was involved as well, but thank you guys very much, and on behalf of the village. All right, so let's move into reports in minutes. Chief?
So for the month of March, we had 221 calls for service. One criminal case. Five uniform traffic tickets we issued. We issued 11 warnings. Four fire calls, four alarms. We patrolled roughly 2,340 miles, and the approximately approximate amount of vehicles that came through the gates were 798. Started getting increase.
Seasonal.
Care to give an update on the automatic gate?
Yeah, everything's working good there. You know, we're still encouraging people to get registered that have not registered yet. Working out well.
Do the officers have more time to vet non-resident individuals?
Yeah, so I mean, if the gate doesn't open, then obviously that vehicle needs to be vetted, and they are spending more time and, you know, getting proper identification from people.
One thing I think I should announce that you and I discussed recently was that we have no intention of recalling the existing tags at this point in time.
Yeah, well, we did have a an issue where a vehicle backed into the camera, and the camera went down. It was kind of seamless, because everything ran smooth at the gate, and the camera, the vendor came right out and repaired it at no cost, which was nice. But, you know, we still manually opened up the gate for tag holders. So, yeah, if we remove the tags, then every vehicle would have to stop in the case that that camera system goes down.
Right.
So it's probably not a good idea.
So we agree. At this point, there's no requirement to return your tags. I know a lot of people will be happy about that because they like having their tag.
Yeah, no, it's unfortunately, we need it for a backup. We just found that out.
Right, right. Okay. Any questions for the chief? Jeff?
We've been doing a lot of work over at Weewaw Park, and from what I gather from today, we're going to be doing some more work over at Weewaw Park. We installed another mailbox stand at the Triangle on Pine Hill or Pine Road and Ridge Road. We've built a couple additional ones for Clubhouse Road, which we'll install when we get a chance. We built three new flower boxes out here. There were three that were just beyond repair, so we had to build new ones. We did a lot of brush cutting and tree removal down at the racetrack for the tree advisory board, and then we mowed the whole area. It has to be done twice a year, so we did that. Let's see here. We spread mulch down at the front gate.
Looks beautiful.
Beds. Built a screen for the sliding window on the new booth.
Is that installed?
Yes, we put it in the other day.
Oh, you missed the show.
That's terrific. Thank you.
We installed the new payroll fingerprint scanner at the DPW.
Excellent.
Patch potholes on Tuxedo Road. It got pretty beat up over the winter, and some over here on Laurel Lard. With the downtown, with the, we had another water main break on East Village Road a couple weeks ago, and Simmons have installed a new pressure-reducing valve down by Bentley's Deli. So if the regulator that controls the pressure downtown gets too high, this will allow it to blow off without blowing up, you know, causing another water main break. And we also had the pressure regulator for the hamlet serviced by the company that made it. And so far, so good. For the past couple of weeks, we haven't had any problems.
Terrific. Well, I want to thank you. You guys have done a terrific job on these matters such as the mailbox posts and the flower containers out here in front of the village office. A lot of people see you as just the best snowplowing people in the world and road maintenance people, but you do so much more. So I wanted to thank you for that. When do we start with our total leak detection?
May 9.
My report, I think, is the 9th.
Nice, May 9.
May 9. Are you coordinated with that?
I didn't know it was May 9.
Okay, you know, we're doing 100% of the system.
I think that's great.
And I think that I don't know if you all feel the same way, but I would think that you'd want to travel with them. And, you know, if there's a situation where they find there's a leak, make a list.
Well, that's, that's part of what they do. They'll send a report. You know, we'll, we'll travel with them as much as we can.
Right.
But I think we'll probably be hydrant flushing in around that same time.
Okay.
That may not work.
Well, that's okay, so you'll coordinate those two items. But when you're doing the hydrogen, the hydrant flushing, I think we're looking for reading the pressures
Yeah.
for the fire department. And then we have those extra few hydrants that we might be able to put into the worst-case scenario.
Mayor, can I just add one thing? When you're marking that, can you mark the hydrants? Even with like a Sharpie, like a number that when you put your spreadsheet together, there's people who are looking for that hydrant actually know that's the hydrant versus the name of person who lives nearby. It's confusing. Even if you take a piece of paintbrush and a, it's a paint, and write a number on it that corresponds, something that's identifiable to somewhere on the hydrant, yes.
We can get an indelible, you know, one-inch or three-quarter inch Sharpie.
Yeah. It'll tag.
It'll just be a lot. Because I tried to find them, and it's a challenge, especially when people moved 10 years ago.
Okay, any questions for Jeff? John?
We still have a fair amount of sales activity in the village. We received three CFO requests over the last few weeks. Ron Reed, 22 Laurel Lard Road. Reverse Mortgage Solutions at 12 Pine Hill Road, I believe Reverse Mortgage Solutions is the prior owner. And Hall at 5 Lookout Stable Road. No-stop work orders were issued since the last meeting. We have three matters before the court tomorrow evening. 12 Pine Hill Road, 116 Tower Hill Road West, and 119 Laurel Lard Road. The last violation, that property looks to have been sold or will be sold shortly, and the new owners already contacted me regarding resolving a few of those issues, which I think they've been already working on. Current projects, the Rifkin House at 97 West Lake Road is proceeding well. Framing is mostly completed. The concrete patio on the side and rear has been poured. They started to insulate the walls and perform additional carpentry on the outside of the house, which included the copper gutters and clash. The Pice House, Tower Hill Road West, is proceeding pretty well. Doing an inspection tomorrow on the footings for the house. So hopefully, things will proceed a little bit faster as the weather's a little bit better. Jeff Boss and I met the contractor there about two weeks ago to discuss the sewer and water line connections at the street where they'll tie into the existing utilities. The water will tie into Tower Hill Road, and the sewer ties into Continental Road on the back of the property. Overton subdivision, a couple months ago, they received approval to do some trimming along the driveway entrances and the proposed house site, so they've been cutting back to some of the overgrowth to provide people with easy access to the property, you know, to look about purchasing it. Couple projects before the bar that had been approved. Walensky received approval for a awning, iron and glass awning over his front entrance door. Deveraux received the BZA variance for an addition to his porch and patio in the rear of his property. And the Simmons received approval from the planning board last week to remove what's remaining of a house on Patterson Brook Road. Under other items, DPW equipment, nine of the 11 items have been picked up. The remaining two items should be picked up by the end of the month, and we already received the $8,545.
This is based on the auction.
This is based upon the auction. We're just waiting for two more items to get picked up. Paul Brooke, East Lake Road, met with him to discuss a new dock and boat configuration depending upon changes to the local law regarding dock length. Optimum internet connection at the police department. Spoke to the police chief early this week. Looks like some progress has been made. Hopefully, substantial progress has been made regarding maintaining adequate internet connections for security in the village.
Did we respond to SCOFIS?
I was waiting to hear from the chief, and the chief thought we were making progress, so I just kind of held tight.
Okay, let's, let's tie that up this week if we can to thank him.
Okay. Good. Communications committee, we're scheduled to meet next Tuesday to collect some thoughts and next steps. Lookout Stable Road, we have a new property owner, vacant piece of property, and can be corresponding with him regarding what's required for a building permit application for a new home on a vacant lot. We also have a new owner of a vacant piece of property on Tuxedo Road. Met with the property owner and had some email communications regarding water and sewer lines for a new home and possible subdivision. Regarding the village's insurance policies, in the process of seeking bids for village insurance for the 2022-2023 budget, we spent several hours providing information to the existing and a new insurance company to obtain the best rates. Water distribution system, Jeff reported that the pressure relief valve's been installed. I did have a brief discussion with Joe Zongle on what the possible cost would be if we were able to install a battle locker on the the pressure regulator, so we can monitor the pressure in the system to really see if there's much of a fluctuation. And if we do that, then we can really accurately dial in the blow-off valve to try to reduce as many breaks as possible on a system that's very pressure-sensitive. So Joe's going to get back to us just for some prices on some technical equipment there. And as we discussed before, leak detection, GPRS LLC will be here the week of May 9.
We have someone in the waiting room, but I'd like to go back
Sure.
to discuss this comment. You said a possible subdivision on Tuxedo Road. Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, there's a piece of property on the left-hand side of the village from
Is that the Grace property?
Former Grace property. It's a large enough piece of property where they could possibly get three or four lots if they wish to. So I was just going over possible water and sewer line connections with them.
One of the issues is that that is under the gateway.
They've been aware of that, provided a copy of the code.
And so if it's impossible to subdivide without violating under the existing four-acre zoning, the gateway overlay, I would be willing to talk to the planning department to see if there's any interest in doing what we did with Overton, which was, even though we were able to change layouts, we might have gone three and a half acres here or two acres on another one, and so that maybe they're more clustered, like say a Pepperidge Road, so that they will not interfere with the overlay. So I'm happy to talk to them about that, or maybe you might want to hook them up with Joanne.
They're well-versed on the gateway.
They are.
I've talked to them about it, and I don't think they have plans to fully densely, you know, populate or subdivide the area at this point, so.
Can I ask a couple quick? The Reed thing is change of ownership. They need a new CFO for that?
Yeah, typically, when we get a, when there's a sale, we get a letter from a title company asking if there's any violations. We typically do a safety inspection.
Reverse Meeting Solutions, we all had trouble at 12 Pine Hill. Is that, does this resolve all those troubles?
No, they're one of the three items before the court tomorrow evening. I met with the property owner and met with the tenant the day before. There's still several items that haven't been addressed.
If that property were to change hands, would that be an easy way to get it to be addressed?
We have worked with the new owners, provided we have some commitment towards resolving the violations.
Is there a new owner at this point?
No, there isn't. It could be, you know, they could be seeking financing, and that's why the title company may have written us a letter. But we have no reason to believe that it's a sale at this point.
Yeah, no, I'd heard about the transaction. It seems a screwy transaction.
Which means first. Anyone have questions for John? Okay. The Justice Court, Water, Treasury are all listed and will stand as they are in the record. Do any of the trustees have questions or comments about the Board of Trustees' March Minutes or Board of Assessors' March Minutes? Thank you. Other, CSLAP has been posted. It lists the volunteers who will be measuring certain conditions, chemical conditions in our lakes, and I wanted to thank them and acknowledge them by posting their names as volunteers. We also currently posted the Weewaw Park membership and donations. And that is also available for you. So with that, I'm going to open the public comment period. And I'll start with folks in the room. We have one individual with us this evening. Jay, just identify your place of residence.
Sure, Jay Reich got it. 121 Laurel Road. I see, you know, old business, which confused me a little bit, but there's going to be a resolution to have a public hearing on the use of boats in the Weewaw Lake, correct? Are you going to introduce the law that we're public hearing about?
Yeah, I will. Not tonight.
Okay, when will we have?
Within the limit that's required before the public hearing.
Right.
Yeah. It will be published.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome. That's it?
That's all I got right now.
Okay, I could tell you what, what it basically said is going to say. If it, and if it passes, it'll allow us to launch canoes and kayaks and so forth from the Weewaw Park as a service to the members. And right now, the law reads that only people that have property are allowed to launch boats. So that's the point.
I think there's a, I think there's a clause that says you can designate other, the Board of Trustees can designate other locations.
That would be great. So, you know, we'll see whether we do a formal rewrite or a resolution, but I thank you very much for that. Okay, I'll move now to people on Zoom or the phone. If you have any comments, please let us know, and we'll turn on your microphone.
Mary Roth has raised her hand.
Please. Hello, Mary.
Hi, let me turn on my video. I'm Mary Roth, and I'm a trustee for two trusts that own property in the town of Tuxedo. And one is the MSP Realty Trust, and the other is Library Realty Trust. And we sent notifications to the Village of Tuxedo Park Water to have, based on the bylaws, to have the water bills continue to be sent to the tenants in those properties. We did the official requesting of that and was wondering where that stands as that we followed all the rules in the bylaws as to asking for that permission. I know you changed the policy, the Water Department changed the policy recently. And as property owners, based on the Village Code 97-8E, we would like to enact and request that those bills be sent to the tenants. We would then also be liable for any unpaid amounts. Should they not pay, we would have no problem doing that, but we would like it to go back to the way it used to be. I think this was the first quarter that we received the bills.
Right, so it's on the agenda for this evening, and I'm going to turn the floor over to trustee Casker.
You're, you're the last item on the agenda. And so we have received two letters from you. We also, for the board's information, received another letter from another property owner. Everybody has agreed that if their tenants do not pay by the due date, then the owners would be liable to pay those bills. It's in our code, and so we'll vote on that. To pass that resolution to allow the tenants to be billed, and then the property owners, if the tenants don't pay.
Mary, is that satisfactory, the answer?
That is satisfactory to me. Hopefully, you'll start that Q2, because we already requested the funds from the property, the renters for Q1. So moving forward with the next set of bills, that would be terrific.
Nice to meet you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. So do we have any other questions in the people that are on Zoom or on the phone? Last call. The public comment period is closed. Let's move to the consent agenda. I'll read through the items. Add all written reports to the permanent record. Approve March minutes for both meetings. Approve Earth Day Community Shredding Event. Approve usage of Weewaw Park for the 2022 fifth-grade picnic for the students of George Grant Mason Elementary School. Approve resignation and payment plan, part-time officer Tyler Stark. Authorize the mayor to sign the state pollutant elimination system speedy's permit for the sewage treatment plant. Authorize the transfer of $50,000 from the water fund to the capital improvement savings account. And authorize the mayor to renew the CDP/HP dental plan. Rates are the same as the previous year. Do any of the trustees have any questions about these individual items, like more clarification? Okay. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees approve the consent agenda. Items A through H. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Great, thank you. Old business. The first topic is a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign the intermunicipal agreement with the town for the summer camp to use the Weewaw Park. Last time we spoke, trustees, we had agreed that I would negotiate, you had given me the authority to negotiate terms. And I did that. And when I asked Brian, village attorney, to write something up, he suggested an intermunicipal, municipal agreement and has drafted such, and I distributed that to the trustees. It covers the terms and conditions. And Brian, would you like to explain to the public why that's a preferable method over a licensing agreement, for example?
Primarily, in this case, it's because the camp program is run by the town. So it's just easiest to do an intermunicipal agreement with the town and the village agreeing to allow the camp to use the property. Normally, we do a license agreement. It would be somebody other than a municipality for whom we could not do an IMA. But since it's a town, that's an easy way to do it. And we haven't presented to them yet, but if the board's good with it, we can then follow up with Mr. Proter on the town side. And they would have to approve it as well.
Terrific. So any questions? Everyone okay with that approach?
I'm sorry, I'm reminded of the other thing I wanted to ask about during my, if I can ask.
We will make an exception.
Thank you, sir. As I read the terms of the agreement, the park, I'm sorry, the camp can use the park from noon until 3:00 in the afternoon.
Correct.
And it also says that the camp can't interfere with the exclusive right of the beach, whatever we're calling the beach-going group from 1:00 until 8:00. Does that mean that the kids from the camp can't swim after 1:00?
I'll be very honest. I picked up a typo on this just prior to the meeting, and that should have been changed.
Okay.
So we're on that.
Thank you.
I'm looking for an executive secretary.
I don't think you can afford my rate.
Good take on that. Okay, so I'm going to read a resolution then. Resolve that the Board of Trustees authorize the mayor to sign the IMA with the town for the summer camp to use the Weewaw Park and present it to the town for agreement. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Terrific. So you know what he's referring to, right?
Yeah.
When it was before. Yeah. Oh, okay. I would like to bring up a public hearing and a new local law regarding the launching of boats on Weewaw Lake from Weewaw Park. And if, if it's necessary, if it can be done by resolution, we'll do that. But let's go ahead and schedule a public hearing for next week, excuse me, next month, 6:50, May 18. And a copy of that will be distributed well in advance of the limit under separate cover. And also will be noticed well in advance of the required time. Any questions? Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees schedule a public hearing on the use of boats on the Weewaw Lake for 6:50 PM, May 18, 2022, at the Village Hall. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The Solitude Lakes Management in their contract combined prepayments for all three treatments on the lakes for the milfoil eradication, which was a surprise to me and was not in our budget. So I went back to them and negotiated. They were able to talk to the manufacturer of Procellicor and give us better payment terms, which I distributed, so it's closer to the $50,000, $55,000 range per year, which is what we had been budgeting. So I recommend that we go ahead and authorize me to sign that. Are there any questions? Brian, any questions?
No questions.
Sure.
Reviewed. Good.
Okay. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees authorize the mayor to sign the Solitude Lakes Management Agreement with the updated payment plan for milfoil eradication. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Moving on to new business. I would like Tinka or John to explain to the board who Munistad is, how we got to them, and what the benefits are.
We've used Munistad in the past to consult with regarding bond issuance that we may request for large capital improvements. We met with him about a month ago, and he did a brief analysis of some of the bonds that we have. And he brought to our attention there's some cost savings that he could provide us. This is net of his fees. He could do some maneuvering with two of the bond funds, our bond issues, and we could save about $5,000 a year. maneuvering with two of the bond funds, our bond issues, and we can save about five thousand dollars a year. And the bonds expire in about ten years. So it's about a fifty thousand dollar total savings. Um, and of course he offered his services in the, in the future, uh, to consult with us, uh, on what we might need going forward. Simply put.
Right.
He's obviously very knowledgeable. They've been in the business for quite a long time. Uh, we have no reason not to.
General financial planning. Uh, and, uh, I'm, I'm not sure if everyone is aware, but you know, the grants we applied to, we did not receive awards on any of them. They were just issued. So, you know, bond issuing, uh, short-term loans, long-term loans are going to be an issue. And we would like to have proper advice. Sadly. Um, so I'll read a resolution. Uh, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Munistat, the firm specializing in municipal finance and municipal government-related matters. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
I said it. Okay, uh, we are going to, uh, pass a resolution, which is required by municipal law to collect private donations to make sure that they're put in a certain compartment. And related to certain expenditures. And I believe that our attorney has written a resolution for that. Is that handy? What page?
Um, I guess the third.
Oh, this giant long one. Figures. Do you guys work by the hour or?
You can do the be resolved part. No, we don't actually.
So I could just do the be resolved part? Hmm, okay. Uh, resolution accepting donations for the Weewah Park. Uh, friends of the Weewah Park, uh, for an improvement fund. Uh, now therefore be it resolved as follows. Section one, the above whereas clauses are incorporated herein as if set forth in full. Section two, the village board hereby ratifies and accepts donations set forth in the annex documents for the purposes of the Weewah Park. Section three, such donation shall be subject to refund absent approval of the village board. Not be, thank you. Section four, such donations shall not be directed to any other purpose without the written permission from the donor indicating another purpose and approval of the village board. Section five, this resolution shall be effective immediately. Uh, may I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for that. Okay, um, we are now at new business eight C. Uh, resolution regarding the Weewah Fishing Club employee eligibility request. Um, they have asked to, uh, exceed the cap to allow the part-time police officers to participate in the club. They still have their own vetting process, so it's not an automatic in. Um, I had a long talk, uh, with Tom and some senior members of the club. I support it. Um, I don't know how you folks feel. I believe Chris supports it, but, uh, I'll read that resolution and then we can discuss it. Uh, be it resolved that the, uh, Board of Trustees approve the Weewah Fishing Club's request to, uh, go over the cap of eligibility. Uh, may I have a second?
Second.
All right. So what do you guys think?
Um, I mean, how many police officers do we have part-time? Twenty-six or something?
We're eighteen, but only two of them have applied to be in the fishing club.
Okay, so that makes a difference. And then would that extend to other village members like D W?
They're already in.
They're in already?
Yeah. I think this was specifically for the police.
Yeah, because we, we had two officers that, uh, applied to the fishing club.
Right, so, and how do you feel?
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, Chris, I know you agree, right?
Yep, I agree. No issues.
Uh, Josh?
Makes sense to me.
Okay. All right, so I'll read that. Oh, I already had a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, Chris, I'm going to have you, uh.
Uh, fundraiser.
Fundraiser, I'm sorry, where are we?
D.
D, D, thank you very much. All right, so, um, there's been a fundraiser, uh, proposed, uh, by the Weewah Park Committee. Uh, welcoming the members of the Weewah Park and Beach Club. Uh, it will be Sunday, May fifteenth at two P M. Uh, they plan on having a bluegrass band, uh, a couple, or at least one food truck. And food and set tables and so on. I think it'll be a lot of fun. Uh, the fundraiser aspect of it is, uh, to seek donations for the, um, Friends of the Weewah Park Improvement Fund, which we just approved. And, uh, I think it's a terrific idea. So does anybody have any questions about it?
No.
No questions.
Josh?
Josh.
You should have said no.
I just said, I was coming off mute. You gotta give me a second. The answer is no, no questions.
Got it. All right, uh, be resolved, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approve the Weewah Park Summer Fundraiser on Sunday, May fifteenth at two P M. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nice to have it. Okay, uh, now I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
So, uh, I, I think it was a few months ago, we discovered, well, we, we're having some problems collecting, um, payment for some dues of water bills. Um, and as we were digging into some of the, our code, we've recognized that for many, many years, we were billing people who lived at the residence or using the water, which makes sense. But the code requires the property owners to be billed. So we changed that and we build the property owners. When property owners would prefer a tenant or the, the resident living there to be billed, the code says that they need to send us a letter explaining certain specifics of how payment would be recouped if the tenant doesn't, um, pay the bill by the due date. We received three letters. We heard from Ms. Mary Roth earlier explaining her situation. And there was a third letter as well. So we have a resolution to approve these property owners' requests to build a tenants. Um, should they fail? Sure, and that's changed. This is changing the name of person being billed. Um, without, I guess I'll read the resolution and then we can have a discussion.
I'll just make one suggestion.
Sure.
You may want to consider adding the Q two. Uh, she had mentioned starting at a Q two. If you want to incorporate that in your, yeah, I don't know if that's, if you agree with that, but that's what she had requested.
I mean, we just make it effective immediately and whenever the bills go out. Yeah, because I don't know what the third person wants to do. Denise can work that out. She's authorized to make the change.
Okay, very good.
Again, uh, be resolved that the Board of Trustees authorize the water department to build the tenants at Seven Library Road, Two Schoolhouse Lane and Twenty-One Augusta Place. And that this authorization is no, in no way alleviates the property owners to the liability of the bill should the tenants not make appropriate payments by the due date, effective immediately.
All right, I'll take that. Uh, may I have a second?
Aye.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you, Chris. And would you like to continue, sir, on the code red? Yeah.
So the other issue that Denise has, um, brought up to us is that some residents in the town don't have email, don't have internet, so they don't necessarily get all of the email alerts when there's a water main break or boil water notice. And a way to alleviate that is to incorporate them into our code red system, which can be segmented by, um, population. So we can have certain town customers on the, water customers on the code red. And then, uh, a code red can go out to alert members, uh, or water customers affected by, um, water issues, uh, almost freely. And that requires the mayor to sign an updated agreement at no cost with the code red organization. Um, it's just to add those people to the database.
Uh, I support it.
I do too. In fact, I would suggest that, um, I had a few people call me. There was a fatality down Route seventeen.
Yeah.
Which totally locked up Route seventeen for a period of time. Um, I, I think one of the useful things about a code red situation like that is when there's going to be blockage like that, simply an announcement that Route seventeen is closed. So if you want to.
We attempted it.
You attempted it.
Code red was down. I couldn't make a post, so I called them and they're like trying to apologize that they were down. They got back up that evening. They sent me an email saying we're back up.
We put a backup.
But we did, we did try.
Right. I could have done an email. I could have done an email.
Okay.
What day was this?
Uh, Monday.
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 Saturday morning.
Monday.
Oh, I was in Monaco. All right.
I would also offer in that situation, um, talk to the chief lieutenant in town or Marissa the clerk and we'll put it out on the hour. Might not get everybody in the village.
Yeah, we're not in, we're not on that.
It could be.
All right, so, uh, I'll read a resolution.
You guys use code red or?
Uh, be it resolved, uh, that the Board of Trustees authorize the mayor to sign an updated code red agreement to include, uh, town, uh, residents on the village water system. Uh, of water main breaks, water customs, uh, excuse me, uh, boil water notices and other department alerts. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, Elizabeth?
Can I just add one item? If that's okay about the election?
Oh, I, this must not be a most recent version of the agenda. Um, can somebody pull up the agenda on the screen, on the main screen?
That's it.
Okay, no, the, the, uh, I had listed their names and everything. Yeah, okay, um, I'm going to start and then have it, um, inserted by Elizabeth. Um, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approve, uh, the following people for the June fourteenth village election as, uh, watchers with an alternate. And as a, with an alternate.
Machine operator.
Machine operator with an alternate. And those names are?
For the table inspectors, Gene Haug, Lori Gugino and Desiree Hickey with Jennifer Weiss as an alternate. And for the, uh, machine operators, um,
Go ahead.
Kurt Haug, James Pearson with Wendy Doolin as an alternate. And the pay is two fifty per day.
Per person.
Per person.
Thank you very much. Uh, may I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. It's not right in front of me. I'm not going to remember. Okay, so, uh, let's move to audit. We have anything?
So, uh, the general fund is one hundred fifty-seven thousand, three hundred eighty dollars and five cents. Water fund is forty thousand, four hundred dollars, eighty-nine cents. Professional fee, six hundred seventy-five dollars.
Thank you. Any questions transferred?
No.
Okay. Um, I would like to, uh, leave temporarily the public meeting and enter executive session to discuss village employees, legal matters, P B A negotiations. And is there anything else that anyone?
I have, I have one issue regarding the assessments.
Assessments. Uh, thank you. Uh, may I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just to be clear, uh, the, I'm going to, I'm going to start that one over scratch then. Uh, be resolved that the Board of Trustees leave the public meeting and enter executive session to discuss a tax assessment issue, village employees, legal matters and P B A negotiations. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Jeff. And the people in the waiting room can, you, you can wait until we re-adjourn into the public meeting. Otherwise, thank you very much for your time.
Need the chief.